Welcome to the Board of School Directors 1,024th Meeting, July 17, 2014. Are we ... we have a show for you. Mr. O'Donnell, could you get the light?
I heard that.
It took a lot of hands, a ton of effort, and countless trips down Fairgrounds Road, but Hatfield Elementary School is now empty and ready for its remodel. All of Hatfield's contents now lie in Penfield, awaiting their new home in the modular wing for the 2014-2015 school year. Big kudos to the whole moving crew for a job well done. The remainder of the facility staff is also hard at work cleaning and preparing all of our other schools for the new school year. North Penn High School has been very busy hosting numerous community education summer camps. This week, the Advanced Lego Camp, the Technology Camp, and the Basketball Camp are all happening in the gymnasium and surrounding areas. Community education summer camps are a great way for kids to spend time in the summer enjoying something that they love. If you love to golf, then an annual North Penn Educational Foundation Golf Outing is the thing for you. Held on Monday, August 18, at Pinecrest Country Club, each golfer receives a lunch, round of golf, a sit-down dinner, and numerous opportunities to win prizes. It's only $125 per golfer with all monies supporting the foundation's efforts to provide curriculum-enriching grants to classroom teachers. Please call Madeline Bergman at the number on your screen for more information. And once again, the North Penn Transportation Department will be holding their annual K-Day for all incoming kindergarteners in the North Penn community. Here, the children and their families can take their first ride on a school bus to help ease any fears or anxieties. K-Day will be held on Thursday, August 7, and Thursday, August 14, at 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. at Walton Farm Elementary School. No registration is necessary, and it is free to all community members. Be sure to check out all of our programming 24 hours a day online at youtube.com/NPTV.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. We usually start our action meetings off with an opportunity to congratulate and talk about the great things that have happened, and this is one of those nights. Tonight, Dr. Dietrich, why don't you take us?
Thank you. It is our pleasure this evening to recognize members of the North Penn Odyssey of the Mind teams, and with us this evening we have Joanne Wernas.
Good evening, school board members, cabinet members, and Dr. Dietrich. On behalf of the students who participated in Odyssey of the Mind this year, their coaches and their parents, I would like to thank you for your continued support of North Penn Odyssey of the Mind. This year, a little less than 200 North Penn students from district elementary schools, middle schools, and the high school participated in Odyssey of the Mind, commonly referred to as OM. Essentially, OM is a co-curricular program which allows students to use the knowledge they learn at school to work collaboratively within a team to solve a problem. Their solution is presented in an eight-minute skit which is performance-based, but usually includes technical elements. Creativity and humor are also essential. Each team performs their skit at a regional tournament, and based upon their scores can advance to the state and world finals. OM is an activity which affords our students an opportunity to grow, to dream, and as our district motto suggests, to achieve greatness. Tonight, you will meet students from four teams that achieved greatness at the OM regional competition and advanced to the state tournament. One team, whose students attend North Penn High School, advanced to the world finals and placed first. And I lost my place. It's exciting. They placed first out of 49 teams from the United States, Poland, Mexico, China, and South Korea. In this changing world, the capacity to innovate and the ability to solve problems creatively have become just as important as academic knowledge. Odyssey of the Mind is creating innovators. The many parents who support North Penn Odyssey of the Mind do so because they believe it has the potential to prepare our students for a future where innovation, collaboration, and problem-solving are critical to success, and they are appreciative that their district offers a program that is a part of a revolution in learning. Once again, on behalf of every student that participated in OM this year and their families, thank you for your continued support of North Penn Odyssey of the Mind. Now, I'd like to present the students. The students from North Penn High School include Kevin Chen, who's unable to make it tonight; Anthony Flores, unable to make it tonight; and Robert Gabler, unable to make it tonight. Very busy group. Alex Ives. You go around and shake their hands. Oh, take this.
Congratulations. Well done for yourself.
Oh, thank you. Max Ives, who is unable to be here tonight; Madison Wernas; and from Pendale Middle School, if you could follow and go to Mr. Shapinski and get your Laura Butterworth; Krista Butterworth; Lindsay Mullica, who cannot make it tonight; David Shelley; Max Foye;
Hold on. Slow them down. Hold on. We're messing up. Okay, now we're ready.
Sorry. And Hero Wardwell-Gall. From Pembroke Middle School, we have Victoria Chu, who's unable to make it tonight; Jay Dottawala; Katie Har; Ryan Nolte, who is unable to be here tonight; Sidney Stark; Alex Zo; and from Bridle Path Elementary School, we have Samantha Block, who's unable to be here tonight; Lauren Eglin; Claire Ryabin; Amber Scattergood; Ivy Scattergood; Annie Shin, who's unable to be here tonight; and Aaron Zhu. From General Nash Elementary School, we have Abby Boquist; Laura Baymore; Peter Baxter and Emily Natalie, who are unable to be here tonight; Catherine Snyder; Jacob Stroll; and Morgan Stroll. Congratulations to our state participants and our world champions.
Congratulations. As has been our tradition, it's going to be an opportunity for the full board and the administration to congratulate each and every one, so please come through. Would you join in at the end for us?
Certainly.
As some of you move to join your kids, you should be aware that this is going to be rebroadcast, so you can see it live. Not live, I should say, but July 18 at 7:30, Monday and Tuesday at 12:30 p.m. and 7:30, and then again on Wednesday at 12:30, so you get a chance to record it. Oh, this is on Comcast 28 and FiOS 29. It's shown on both. All right, it is the time for the Audience of Citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address at the podium.
Good evening. And the Odyssey of the Mind in my area would be making inroads for no deficit. That's my area of interest, but I'm glad to see so many young people excelling in their interests. But, good evening, and thanks to the board for their tireless efforts on behalf of those involved with the development of our district, the visions of the parents, to provide a pathway for academic excellence. This is no simplistic problem, solved quickly, as you are all aware. It's an ongoing process with many crosscarries and ebb-tides, and it's very difficult. I hope that the public realizes what a difficult job this is to bring all these pieces together in an effective organization done with prudent spending. Each stakeholder comes to this journey with a different perspective. I wonder at times why so few taxpayers, voters, teachers, hourly district employees, students, they should have dialogue with the board at these times, but many times, I just don't know whether it's that they're completely satisfied, or it's apathy, but it's disheartening to see six people from the community show up when thousands and thousands of people participate in either paying their taxes or sending children to the district schools. Now, as far as costs, which I brought up, in five years, we spent a billion dollars. A billion dollars. It's a pretty significant amount of money. We graduate about 1,000 kids a year. I know you can't do it with a graduation, but a billion dollars in five years is a significant amount of money for 5,000 people. And I do realize there's people in the pipeline-
Well, it's not just 5,000 people. There's 13,000 kids every year for five years.
I know, but I'm just saying is, the end product coming out off the assembly line is 1,000 a year. Okay, that's what I'm pointing at.
That's the way the structure's set up. You graduate at 12th grade.
Do you agree that's a significant amount of money?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I don't agree that that's the case. We have people going through the pipeline that excel every year. We have people going from first grade to second grade, second grade to third grade. We educate our children progressively, and we send about 1,000 a year into society to start their lives.
Why do you say 13,000 times 5? So, 5 times 13,000 divided into your billion dollars. Let's get it right, Bill.
Well, in manufacturing, the only thing you're really concerned about is the product that leaves the factory. That's what I'm saying, is that's what you have to share for your effort. The ones leaving the factory.
Even works in progress are assets.
Oh, okay. That's whatever your point of view is. Okay. Now, the cost is amazing. For the choose the voice, that many should choose to voice their opinion on this, and it's a little sad to see the apathy in the community, and I don't know why. I received my tax bill in the mail with the increase. You know I was not happy because it exceeded Act 1. And the reason for that is, maybe you could tell me why that exceeded the Act 1-
Bill, you're wrong. Absolutely wrong. It did not exceed Act 1.
The Act 1 base index is where we were.
I expect an apology, Bill.
I apologize. Please accept my apology. I stand corrected.
Two things now. Let's go.
Okay. All right, this is why we're having a dialogue, so that I can be corrected and the public can gain knowledge, and if I stand corrected, well, then they know, and that's very beneficial, that the public be aware. Now, one of the primary problems with, that we're having, may I be corrected, it would be the pensions and healthcare. Are those are the areas that are going up the fastest? Is that what's causing our trouble?
Part of it.
Okay. Do we see any correction in the problem? I know the contract is coming up. Are we going to institute some policy that'll get us out of this legacy cost? Because from what I see right now, 220 million, 240 million, 260 million, it's ongoing. And alls I know, when I sit over there with a taxpayer, tax collector for Lansdale Borough, I said, "Oh, how's it going in there?" "Oh, well, you know, it's pretty tough." People put little notes on their tax bill, and they come in, and they complain vigorously to me about that they feel like they're a hostage, mainly older people which are not getting anything.
Yeah. We could beat this to death, but we all know the primary increase is the piece, the retirement system. We have, you beat this to death, and so have we. We have no control over this. If you want to complain, drive out to the governor's office tomorrow and get him to Twistl Legislative.
Well, surely the solution would be, then, to stop the hiring, go into stringent cost-cutting, so that when one leaves the system, you don't put another one on with a legacy of a pension. Perhaps the new-
No, that already is a law.
Okay.
New hires are under a different system than the current people.
I hope they're just on a contributorship, which I don't think we can afford the old-style pension.
It goes from a defined contribution to a defined benefit plan. I mean, the defined benefit-
A defined benefit, I mean, that's a roadway to chaos.
There is a difference in the categories and classifications of new employees. You have your wish.
Now, one of the areas which I saw, and I looked through the area, was the parking for the high school. When we went through our budget, did every, if you went up 2 million, were we somehow able to find, like, well, we found a million in cost-cutting? So, everybody that was involved in it gave a little bit. I was wondering, now, there's the high school. $50 to park your car. Well, you ride by Pembroke Station, it's a dollar a day. A dollar a day. That didn't go up. Don't you think that you could've said, "Okay, at the high school, we got to make it 75"? No, how about a dollar a day? That's $182, because we're giving you a bus, and you only want to give them $10 when they don't ride the bus? I think that's ridiculous. To park the car? You can't park your car anywhere for that price.
If we did that, what did you suggest we do with the extra $5,200?
I think, put it toward the operation of the thing? I'm sure the, I'm sure that the security guards-
Have they spent much on paving and-
Exactly. It costs money to pave it, put the lines on. I mean, somebody's doing it. I just thought even a $5 increase, I'm sure that that parking lot has a legacy that is going to have to be paved. I'm sure they're going to have to be, the lines painted and the numbers. I mean, why don't you consider, every year, I know, we're going to have to raise it $5. These things that are static, people are like, "Oh, well, why'd it go up?" Well, the old person over in Lansdale, "Oh, yeah, I got to kick in another $100." What for? Did the students kick in anything? Did they make one dime's contribution? Did the fees go up? Anything that would contribute so that that tax increase would be less than what it would been? Do you agree $5? Does that sound too bad for a kid driving a Mercedes?
So, what you're saying is, we're a public school system-
Yeah.
-mandated to provide public education, and you want us to start charging students to try to help cover the budgetary shortfalls of Harrisburg and Washington? Is that what you're asking us to do?
Well, I think in free-market capitalism, I think the participants need to take ownership-
It's not free-market capitalism.
They need to take ownership and contribute to the system. You know, it must be a shock when you graduate from the high school after people have been patting you on the head.
We have, students have, Bill. It's your time, and I would love to debate this with you.
Yes, all right.
So, you maybe want to come to ECP or some other committee. I'll be glad to talk about it.
Okay, we'll move on about that.
But students have picked a bigger bird, and so have their parents.
We are proud to, I'm almost finished. We are proud to send our students off into the world that represents the district in a really fantastic kind of a way. They are getting a great education, but you know everything can be tweaked, it can get better, become more efficient. We need to scrutinize the cost all the time, bid it out for better pricing all the time. It has to be relentless, and that's what's going on today, and that's probably why things aren't growing too bad, because everybody's being scrutinized, and your contract gets canceled when you try to get more money, and that was never the case before. We have to be fair to all the parties, all the participants, all the taxpayers. We have to be fair to everybody. Everybody needs to kick in a little bit into the system to make it work. It's not, "Wow, we have to load it onto the taxpayers." You know, I'm lucky I don't have a job. I mean, I'm fortunate, I don't need a job, but I really feel sorry for the two couples. "Wow, you got a thing from Berkheimer? Oh, yeah, you know what it cost me? It's pretty significant." You take the house in Berkheimer, you roll that stuff together, wow, this is pretty significant, you know? I think they think they're getting a good value here, but I'm usually find out, there's a little bit of a down comment, like, "Wow, how long is this going to keep going up and up and up in an economy that goes flat and flat and flat?" That's the way it works today. When you come up to this contract, I hope the people that are working for you, the teachers, realize, "You got a great pension. Nobody in Lansdale's getting out at 55. Wow, your medical, that's amazing. I got a price from dot org, I can't afford it." That's the kind of people that you have to make understand. Look, your medical's better than anybody who's kicking the money in to pay the taxes. That's what you got to understand. And if we have to go head-to-head, and we're not getting anything done, okay, that's what's going to happen. God forbid we wind up like Nishamani. Gee, five years. Maybe we should be like SEPTA. The engineer's been out for five years on contract. And that's what happens, when you get one group of people that don't realize the circumstances of what's going on with the management, the administration, and alls they have is a one-way thing. "Oh, yeah, my way or the highway." And it doesn't work like that. The employees have to understand, "You have wonderful salary, you have a great retirement, your medical is incredible. I think you should be happy. You're doing a lot better than the people that pay your salaries." That's all. That's on that topic now.
Bill, watch your time.
Okay, I'm moving on. Next month, this is to change the topic, next month, we'll all be starting the varsity sports again. We're all aware, I've been on this for two or three years now about the concussions. I want an improvement on the concussions. We had 11 concussions and one spine injury. I think what needs to happen is, the parents who want to participate in a varsity sport, oh, no. If you sign that waiver for your son, you need to attend a concussion awareness session. Just, "Oh, yeah, I saw it there in the NFL, and they're kind of upset about it, and, you know, I don't know really how it worked." I think they need to be responsible. Go there, have, well, Luanne left, we have a new one now. They need to meet every sport that has concussions, they need to meet, have an awareness. Yeah, I listened to, I listened to that thing, so that they know. Okay? I trust we will be vigilant in the concussion problems. 10 years, at our current rate, will give you 100 injuries. 100 concussions in 10 years. That is not acceptable for somebody that's 17 years old. That is not acceptable. You need to do something about it, and I guarantee I'll get the right to know, and every two weeks, or every three weeks, I'm going to give the battlefield report on what's going on. And you know what? Why's Pop Warner down? Because people are getting the real statistic. Gee, I don't think I want to have my kid get injured for the rest of his life. It would be a real shame if he's 45 years old and can't remember where he lives. It's serious. You need to act seriously on this stuff. I understand it's a national obsession, but I'll tell you what, it needs to be tempered, and we need to watch it closely, because recurring concussions protected by HIPAA? No, that doesn't work with us. We're protecting you from yourself and your overzealous parents, and we need to do something about it. That's not acceptable anymore. It was okay when you didn't know, there was no scientific facts on what was going on? Yeah, that was acceptable, but it's not acceptable anymore, and I don't care about the NFL, I don't care about the major sponsor, Frito-Lay and Pepsi and all these people, I don't care. They're coming to the end of their, the end of their run, and pretty soon, 20 years from now, it'll be FIFA they'll be watching, not the Super Bowl, I guarantee you. People are getting, when they get knowledge, are going to stop. Okay?
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. At best, we need to make a commitment, a commitment, a real commitment. Yeah, we're going to do something about this. If we had 11 concussions last year, we're going to go down to eight. You tell, you tell Mr. Ryan, "I don't care how you do it, I don't care what happens, but we need to go down," or, "I'm going to be up here, I'm going to be telling the public over and over and over again," until, you know what, took a long time to end segregation, took a long time to end slavery? Well, it's going to take a long time to stop football in high schools, but it's coming to an end because the injuries, that will be the shovel that digs the grave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else, please? All right. Let's move forward with our next item on the agenda. Election of a school board member. The way this process will work this evening, we have an opportunity to decide the process, nominate, discuss it, so do I have any motions? And it's process. You want to talk about the process first?
Yes, Mr. President, you actually don't need a motion. You could simply accept nominations. Nominations do not need any kind of seconding, so it's a matter of putting names on the floor and then conducting votes, perhaps successive votes, until a particular candidate would receive five votes.
How do we want to proceed?
Well, based on what our solicitor just said, I would like to place a name into nomination.
Who is it?
I would like to place Walter W. Brown III into nomination to fill Mr. Latex's seat.
Do we have any other nominations?
I moved the nomination because-
We don't need to do that.
We don't need to do that.
You don't need to?
No, you don't need to do that. Just accept any other-
We have to do, except any other nominations or recommendations, and then we'll decide, we'll do by vote. That's the easiest way to do it. Do we have any others? We're looking for names to be put in nomination.
I understand, and I want the, I want the public to understand how the process works a little bit.
I can't hear you.
The power's out of my house, so it's-
I'm sorry?
There you go.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. There was a resignation by one of our school board members, and there is a process whereby members of the community are to submit a resume, answer some questions, and a financial affidavit. We received 10 applications, and I reviewed all 10 applications, and there are really, all of them are very qualified to be on this school board. We did not discuss amongst us anything about these applications, to be honest with you. We did not talk about who even applied or what our thoughts were about any of them. We do not have an interview process, and so I find that a little difficult to pick a nominee based solely on applications, but that's what we're called to do tonight. And so, I would place Tina Stoll, not because I don't think there are other people that are just as qualified, but because we have no other process to understand or meet these other people. other people. And I know Tina Stoll. I know she's been here. She's been a candidate, and she's very involved in this community. So I nominate Tina Stoll. Thank you.
I would just like to add something to what you just said. It's my understanding, the reason why there's not an interview process is because if we had, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if we had an interview process, that would subject and open up the interview process to be extended to the public, and the public would have the opportunity to answer or ask the people, the applicant's questions. And my feeling personally is that that may subject them to political sort of intimidation or other kinds of questions that may not be in the best interest of the process. That's just my.
And I also feel the same way. I like the way the process is. I respect your point of view, but I think there's a reason why the process is simplistic as it is. In other words, we get the resumes individually, we review them, and then we make a selection from that. And I don't know, I think there's no politics involved here. It's just a matter of, personally, if we have any questions regarding the particular candidate, we call them up and ask them the questions. That way, they feel comfortable, we feel comfortable, and, you know, we're not going around trying to twist somebody's, or somebody's not coming to me trying to twist somebody's hand, and I'm not saying anybody is, to choose a particular candidate. I like the way it is, how simplistic it is, and we've always done it since I've been here, and we're abiding by the law, and I like it this way.
John, I happen to agree with you. I like the way the process is. One of the reasons why I would not want to go through the interviewing process like last time, like this time, there are applicants that did not read the newspaper advertisement, they didn't fill out the form properly, they didn't answer the questions. And if we had a public forum, I would hate to say, you know, sir or ma'am, where's this? Where's this? Now I'm embarrassing them. I read every one of these, and I've chosen a candidate based on what I think the person who filled out all the information. I don't want to embarrass anybody. And I respect your opinion too, because the board members, we should all respect each other's opinion, and I respect that. But I think that when the Pennsylvania Legislature wrote Section 315 and 322 of the school code, they made it clear. So they didn't get into a lot of the detail, whereas another section of the school code is this thick. They left that alone. We follow the solicitor's advice. That's what we're doing. We follow the solicitor's advice, and that's how we're proceeding. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, you were going to say.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say I was very impressed with the applications, and I know it took a lot of people, a lot of time to put them together. And I just feel that I would have liked to have met these people and talked to them before I made a decision tonight. And it's, everyone has their own opinion, and that's my opinion. If we have them fill out applications, you know, I would just like to be able to meet them and talk to them. So it's a very difficult process tonight to know. I also hope these people, if they're not selected this evening, will think about running for office a year from now. You've shown interest. This is a very, very job that I think that we all really have committed to and enjoy. And I also think if you're going to do this job, you have to be committed to being here. Thank you.
All right. Any other nominations? I'd just like to add that I learn many different ways. I have lots of different, what do you call them, multiple intelligences. I like to do the, I listen, I look, I hear, I think about it, I process. I reached out to all 10 candidates and called them on the phone. I took the time to ask a couple of questions to help me make this decision. I did it on my own. Not everyone has to do that. I mean, I did it because I wanted to do it. I had the time to do it. I had a couple of criteria in my mind that, one, someone who was going to be appointed to this position by us if they would win and have five votes, should be somebody who's committed to the district. That means maybe somebody who's already been involved. That's the first step. The second step for me is the qualifications. I agree with Susan that every candidate we have here is qualified. But mixing those two criteria, being involved prior to this position being available, is weighed on me somewhat, and there are only a handful of people that make that finalist list for me. I think we have great choices here. I encourage them to stay involved. I mentioned that on the phone with Carolyn, if it makes you feel better. I told them, no matter what happens, tonight or in a future meeting, you really should get involved.
Does this make us feel better?
Well, I even took the time to tell each candidate that I contacted, how I got involved. Did the same thing. I watched on television, came to meetings when there was issues that of interest to me, started coming to meetings regularly, and here I am. And that's how I got here. So I told that story to everyone. I think, again, we had 10 great candidates here. I'm ready to move forward if you think there are. If we don't have a majority, I think then we can discuss the process further. We have two names on the floor. Do I hear any other nominations? Or? All right. Then the best way to proceed would be roll call, say name?
Yes.
Let's do roll call, say names. Mr. O'Donnell.
Brown.
Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Schilling.
Mr. Brown.
Mrs. Charnock.
Mr. Brown.
Mrs. Leonard.
Tina Stoll.
Mrs. Murphy.
Tina Stoll.
Mrs. Shapinski.
I will choose Mr. Brown.
That's amazing.
Five votes, Mr. Brown, two votes, Mrs. Stoll.
That's absolutely amazing.
I don't think so, Susan. I mean, these are people that have been involved in this meeting. Mr. Brown and Mrs. Stoll have been involved for some time, Mrs. Stoll being longer as a candidate for multiple times. But Mr. Brown's been here every meeting since December.
Okay.
He's come up and talked to the board members. He's voiced his opinion at the podium, so has Mrs. Stoll. There are other candidates in that group, as I said to you, that I felt were involved prior to this opportunity.
If I.
Mr. Brown has succeeded in getting five votes. What's the next step for him?
Yes, if I may, Mr. President, I will contact Mr. Brown to arrange a convenient time to meet, hopefully at Judge Borick's office, where Judge Borick can administer the oath. And once Mr. Brown takes the oath of office, he will then officially become a member of this board.
All right. Recommend approval of the minutes of the June 19th, by the way, congratulations, Mr. Brown.
Is he here?
He's right there.
Yay for you.
Recommend approval of the minutes of the June 19th, 2014 action meeting as circulated. So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions over the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Let's do committee reports. We'll start with support services. Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The support services committee met on Monday, June 30th, and discussed the following items. There was questions about the funding of secured entrances for six buildings. Were discussed by the committee as a result of public comment inquiry. Also, Inglewood Elementary School addition and renovations are substantially complete. Punch lists are being completed by all contractors. A credit change order was discussed in the amount of $15,996.50 from the electrical contractor. Approval of this change order has been moved to tonight's board action agenda. Additional work on gas regulators for the natural gas conversion project was discussed. A change order for the amount of $603.75 from the plumbing contractor to a mechanical contractor was discussed and also moved to tonight's agenda. Work has begun on Half Field Elementary School addition and renovation project. Additionally, the Penfield modular classroom work for the Half Field project started on June 2nd. Two change orders for those projects were discussed at the meeting, and they have also been moved to tonight's agenda for approval. For the modular construction project at Penfield, there was one change order to the general contractor to remove a large tree for $3,000 and a credit change order from the mechanical contractor for $25,650. Also, the administration reported on the status of the North Penn High School security fencing project. The project was delayed due to a late shipment of the gates that will be on before a school opens in September. Construction fencing has been removed, landscape is completed, and the sidewalk caulking is complete. Board posts have been installed, insulation of all remaining gates and punch list items remain for this project. Also, the Gwinnett Square fire alarm construction is underway and moving on schedule, and the Pendale Middle School locker project has begun and is on schedule. And also, the administration updated the Committee on Energy Conservation Projects, electricity procurement, and natural gas procurement due to market conditions, there will be no recommendations for the extension for electricity. But a natural gas contract extension for a 24-month extension is recommended for ratification on tonight's agenda. And the administration also indicated a $13,666.50 check from Pico Energy was received as part of the Pico Smart Equipment Instead of Program for the Inglewood Project. That's good news. The committee asked for your support for these items on tonight's agenda, and our next meeting, by the way, our July 28th meeting was canceled. Our next meeting will be August 25th, that's a Monday, at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any questions of support services this evening?
Yeah, I do. Last.
Want to get that in paper? That report in paper, something so long?
Yeah.
That's a long report. Email it.
Last meeting, we talked about updating or putting on the website what the project plans are for the various schools. Has that been done?
Which project you talking about?
Jesse, what are you talking about?
Capital projects.
Capital projects.
Well, we have, don't we have the schedule posted, just like our outline of the strategic plan?
Time out, time out. That's a finance issue, and I happened to sit down with Steve yesterday. Steve and John are going to be working on, they'll probably come out at the next finance meeting, more than likely August, if there's enough items to talk about. I'm jumping the gun here. But these two are working on all the capital project start dates for the next fiscal year.
Yes, exactly.
Is that going to be an update, John, of the one we have now?
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Schilling and support services tonight? Education, community, and policy, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you. We did not meet in the month of July. Our next meeting is August 11th at 6:30 in this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at ECP tonight? North Penn Education Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
The foundation did not meet this month, but it has been very busy planning for the upcoming year. Coming up soon is the annual golf classic, which will be held Monday, August 18th at Pinecrest Golf Course. We are looking for both golfers and business sponsors at this time. The event typically comes close to selling out, so I would not delay in signing up. I want to thank everyone who has already made a commitment for this great fundraising event, where we hope to top last year's earnings at $15,000. So it's coming up soon, so you need to sign up now. As a reminder, the foundation will also hold a charity luncheon on October 5th at Baco Italian Restaurant in North Wales. Tickets will go on sale soon for this popular event. The annual report is also being compiled and will be available in August. I will make sure the school board receives a copy, and it will be posted online. I ask that everyone take a look at this great work we've been doing and continue to plan for. We meet on August 13th. At this time, we will discuss plans for the upcoming year and work that has been during the summer with foundation investments. Any questions about the foundation can be directed to Christine Lewerowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions with North Penn Education Foundation? You know, you can pay your $75 and go to the outing, but you don't have to play golf, you know? You can just eat and sit in the tent.
There you go, Frank.
All right, finance tonight.
Finance.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance. We're not going to be buying, and we're not filing for the financial. We may have a lot of things that have been placed right here.
If Steve has sufficient items for the agenda, and should the committee be able to meet in the month of August? So we talked about this last month. If these two conditions are met, we'll have a meeting. If not, then they'll be in September. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for finance tonight? Safe schools, Mr. O'Donnell, do you have another update? Oh.
This is the third month in a row, Mr. Shapinski.
I know.
Three times, and you're out.
I'm sorry. I'll write that down.
The Safe Schools Committee has not met since.
Wait, wait. Kurt, could you add chairman's names to the end of each one of those committees from now on? That's fine. We'll make it easy.
I mean, I realize I'm George Plimpton, but nevertheless.
No, no, no.
The Safe School Committee has not met since the last board meeting. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, September 2nd at 6:30 at the Educational Services Center. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will endeavor to make that right again.
August.
That's right. Shoot for August to get it right.
Maybe I'll send you a note. There you go.
All right, North Mako Technical Career Center, who has this report tonight, since Mr. Kerr's away? They didn't have any meetings, right? Okay.
I'm on that board, but I do not have a report for this evening.
There was no meeting, and I know Mr. Kerr was away, so. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
Wow. The IU board did meet. You see, my groups are meeting here now. The Montgomery County IU met on June 25th, 2014, at the Patton Executive Offices. A tour of two West Lafayette Street was held before the meeting. The report of the judge of elections was the first order of business, and thank you. You know, we sent in our votes, and everything went well. A presentation was held on Patton and Project Max. A video was shown showing the graduation of eight students from the Anderson School. North Penn was represented as one of those eight. The school yielded with 70 students. Three years ago, when I went on the IU board, there were 36 Anderson students, and now there are 70. So I have to say that the board is very happy about that. The IU is still operating on a design and development of a new SharePoint site for the IU's Board of Directors. The site will store and manage documents for the board. Documents will be available in August. New this summer is a one-day SAP leadership training being held on August 1st. I can't pronounce this. You must know, support people. D-H-U-Y, D-H-U-Y? Engineering?
Dewey.
Dewey?
Dewey is how it's pronounced.
Okay, thank you. Gave us the progress report on a renovation of number two Lafayette Street. The negotiating team gave a report to the entire board. The first year was settled, and we're working on year two. The next meeting will be on August 27th at the IU. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. I'm sorry, I got out of order. Personnel did not have a committee meeting either in July, so there wasn't a report. I apologize for that. The executive session, though, the public should know, the full board met in executive session tonight, July 17, 2014, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation, litigation, and negotiations. All right, let's move forward with our superintendent's report, and Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of new board policies, 4120, which is use of personal electronic
I recommend approval of new board policies 4120, which is use of personal electronic devices, and 4121, the Internet Responsible and Acceptable Use Policy, per item 3614A through K.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Schilling. I heard. Comments or questions? Is this the first reading?
No, this is...
Final approval? Second? Gotcha. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of amended board policies 5118, which is non-resident attendance status, 5143, the school nutrition service, family fiscal responsibility policy, and 5145, free and reduced lunch prices, per item 3614A through K.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the law firm of DeChelle Bartle and Dewey as solicitors effective July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, at a rate of $150 per hour for general legal and $175 per hour for student-specific special education.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? I'd like to say something nice. Mr. Dewey's firm. You know what? I tell you what. I've been here 17 years. This is going to be my 18th year. And Mr. Dewey's and his partners have represented the district for the majority of those times. And I can tell you that, you know, we get involved with legal battles. We hire attorneys for two things. One, to give us advice, to keep us out of trouble, and to keep us in line with the rules and regulations that we operate under. The other thing is, we pay people to win when we get into fights, when it becomes necessary. Mr. Dewey's firm has done well for that in both matters, including Mr. Iannosi and Mr. Bartle and Mr. Sommers and anybody else in your firm that's been involved with the district over time. So just wanted to say something positive, since I'm very critical of legal fees.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments.
All right. Any other comments? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order EC1 for Electric Tech Incorporated for the Inglewood Renovations Project at a decreased cost of $15,966.50, as listed per item 4214.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. I heard her first. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Recommend approval of change order MC4 for All States Mechanical Limited for the Inglewood Renovations Project at a decreased cost of $603.75, as listed per item 4314.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Recommend approval of change order GC1 for Walter Brucker and Company Incorporated for the Half Field Elementary School additions and renovations project at an increased cost of $3,000, as listed per item 4414.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or question? Is Walter Brucker the landscaper?
Jumbo on the...
Piece of cheesey?
The Half Field project.
The Half Field Elementary project.
Right, right.
At Half Field, right. Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order MC1 for Micro Mechanical Incorporated for the Half Field Elementary School additions and renovations project at a decreased cost of $25,650, as listed per item 4414.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of an easement agreement with PPL Electric Utilities Corp. on the Half Field Elementary School property, as listed per item 4514A through C.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions?
Yes, it's been through our solicitor's office for review? Yes, I looked at it. It's fairly standard. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is an easement for our use or their use? Isn't it for the mods?
Yeah, it's temporary service for the trailers that are there while the guys are working on it in the building.
It's temporary. Gotcha. All right, thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the 2015 district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeals, per item BA4.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district that are listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
Supposed to say thank you.
We did that. Yeah, we were there last week. We did an invitation, right?
This is Mr. Schilling's statement. Say thank you.
We did that. We got your problem.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Recommend approval of bids, per item BA5A through D, as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the personnel items listed under A and B.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts, per item BA8A through C, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the alternative placements, per item BA9, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. All right, we're going to move forward with the finance report. Mr. Schrock?
Thank you, Mr. President. This financial report is for the month of June 2014. Cash receipts for the month of June totaled $8,883,238.09. Disbursements for the same month were $25,733,126.51, leaving the district, as of June 30, with total available funds of $60,428,469.35. And I'm recommending approval of disbursements be sanctioned for the month of June 2014 in the amount of $26,369,269.66. And disbursements be approved for the month of July 2014 in the amount of $2,172,246.81. So grand total between sanctions and disbursements are $28,541,516.47.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved. Let's talk budget transfers.
I'm recommending approval of budget transfers for the month of May and June 2014 in the amount of $805,067, per item number BA-10A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under Other Business, we have actually two issues. The first one is, and we don't have to do the second one, we did get an email from the PSBA about appointing representatives. Most of you were, some, no one really said, "I want to do it," but I assume that there's some people maybe attending the PSBA conference when they use this. So we don't have to have an appointment. They would like us to do it in July, but doesn't stop us from doing it in August. Or whoever may want to go to the conference.
After last year, I'm not sure I'm going to try it again.
Well, I'll tell you what. Then let's wait till August, and everybody will look at their schedules, and if somebody's gone, we can appoint representatives. You have to be there to vote. And it is a very long process.
Do you want, does somebody want to nominate, Mrs. Leonard, now?
Let me think about it.
All right. That's fine. All right. Under Other Business, the nomination to the North Mako Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee to fill the unexpired term for Steven Lattick, had, since Steve resigned his duties, this pops this position open. I've only had two people express interest in this position. So...
And if I may, before you, say that the term does, is set to expire in December of 2015.
Okay.
So how do we do this?
Well, Frank had expressed interest, and Joe did too.
Like to do it too?
I was hoping that you would answer the email that I sent you, saying, "Talk to Joe before this meeting if you want to settle this."
I sent him an email saying I expressed interest.
I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that.
Well, Joe asked earlier because he knew Steve was on the joint operating committee. Frank sent me an email asking also today.
I think I heard it somewhere. It wasn't even mine.
Speak up if you want it. If you don't want it, Frank wants it.
Well, I would like to go back.
Wait a minute. She wants it too now. This is going to be a floor fight over an extra duty to be out one more night a week. Go ahead, let's pull this off. I want to see this, but it happened. I will tell you, I got a beautiful clock from my service when I was there.
Yeah, you're...
Okay.
You got upset? It was this big, it was a desk?
Just remember, gentlemen, I'm on that board, so choose accordingly.
Well, I'll fight for that, then.
Are we going to go for interviews? How do we do this, Mr. Dewey? We ask for nominations here, they have to speak up? What's the drill here? We have to appoint somebody.
Yeah, the school code isn't specific about appointments to the, these committees. So I would suggest the same process, though. Each candidate can nominate himself or herself and then take votes.
There you go. I'll just say that I've been on the board for 16 years. I've always asked Vince to put me over there, and I've never had the opportunity.
That is not something new.
All right.
So I have the time.
Are we going to, are we going to, I would love Frank to be there with me. So I would nominate Frank to be there with me.
I just want to say this, and I've said this before, when we've had to make these kinds of decisions, I don't like voting between my brothers or my sister, my brother. I don't like that. We only have to send one person over there.
Give me your vote.
Oh, no, no, poor coast, Frank. You don't do that. No, no. Frank, you want to nominate yourself?
You nominate yourself?
I'm nominating myself.
It's not, Ms. Murphy, did you nominate Frank?
No, Mrs. Leonard.
Mrs. Leonard did.
Mrs. Leonard did.
All right, so we have Frank's name and nomination from Mrs. Murphy.
My God.
Mrs. Murphy, no, I'm sorry. Mrs. Leonard nominated you. And you seconded it. You don't need a second for this. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to nominate yourself?
Okay.
Is that yes?
I'm nominating, yeah. Well, yeah. Yes, I like it over there. I served on the board there for four years, the operating committee for four years, and I have a little affinity, a little backstory for wanting to be there. I applied to that school at one point when I was going to Methacton and for the Electrical Contractors program, and I couldn't get in to the school. So I find it kind of ironic that I'm on the joint operating committee of a school that I couldn't get into. So I sort of like get a kick out of that. So, yeah, so there's a little affinity there for me to serve on that committee.
So you're nominating yourself?
I'm nominating myself.
All right. Any other nominations?
Well, since...
Do you want to split the vote and jump in here?
No, I like Mr. Sullivan's story. I like his affinity, so I'm going to nominate Mr. Sullivan.
Oh, you nominated himself, so he was on the floor. Now, you see, now you do have to choose between your brothers. I'm telling you, this is never a pleasant process.
Vince, who'd you nominate? You nominate Joe? So there's three people. So what do we do, Mr. Solicitor?
Two, two, just you and Joe.
I'm sorry.
Here comes...
I would employ you to, I'd employ you to withdraw your nomination of yourself, so then you can make it just one person.
You do not have to accept the nomination.
Yeah, don't accept the nomination, is what I was doing. You can make this easy. I'm sorry, you're saying...
All right, come on, let's go.
No, I'm not. You nominated me, um, let's go.
This is not going to be pleasant, I can tell you right now.
This is sausage and bacon.
Exactly. This is how they make sausage. We're about to see it happen, I'm telling you. All right. Steve, would you do a roll call, please, by saying the last name of the person you want?
Unfortunately, Mr. Schilling, you're first on the list. Mr. Schilling? Yes?
Come on.
Hey, Frank, I'm for you 100 percent.
Yeah. Say a name. Mrs. Charnock?
Sullivan.
Mrs. Leonard?
I still like you.
We switch seats. You never can sit there again.
I'm going to stick with Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you.
Mrs. Murphy?
Mr. O'Donnell, he's on our state school.
You got to call them first, please, before I have to beat a tiebreaker in this mess. Mr. O'Donnell?
This is great. Thank you so much for calling my name.
Obvious. Hey.
Mr. Sullivan? This is why Tim went to Florida, you know?
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll vote for him, Sullivan.
Great. Mr. Shapinski? I get to beat a tiebreaker between you two.
You better believe, this is great.
Geez, you guys are both going to be in my face tomorrow. I can see it going.
That's great.
I'll buy you a beer tonight.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Charnock, if that helps.
No, it's too late.
You're a drink. Now, I'll be honest with you. Joe has had an opportunity to serve there, and hearing that story makes me want to support him. But Frank has never had an opportunity to do it. He has asked repeatedly over the 18 years I've served here, so I will vote for Frank.
Oh, for Frank?
I voted for Frank.
I turned it off. I came in.
Yeah, I already voted. Congratulations, Frank. You win.
You win, Frank.
With four votes. You need five?
Yeah, five. That was five.
Was that five?
That was five. Right?
Oh, that's ready to vote? No, that's four.
Four votes, O'Donnell, three votes, Sullivan.
Yeah, four, three. Tim's not here.
Well, if it takes five, I'll change my vote.
Why, we motion to adjourn this meeting and start the fight?
Please.
Yeah, you can get him. Yeah, you only need...
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting?